Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the 4:00 PM budget session for Lynchburg City Council. And with that, I will start with Ms. Sivercheck. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Today, we continue our walk through the budget for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021. And I also just want to tell you that the budget team and the deputy city manager and I just spent six hours together reconfiguring and brainstorming how to rebalance the FY2020 budget. We'll be bringing that to you in a couple of weeks because we're not quite there yet, as well as the 2021 budget. This is not an easy task, as you might imagine, but we will have something for you for your consideration on the 21st. With that, we are going to be starting with external service providers, which begins on page 247. And Ms. Witt will walk you through this whole, this entire section.
Hi, I'm just gonna, whoo, that's loud. I'm just gonna look at the ones that have the biggest change and are mandated. The Blue Ridge Regional Jail Authority is increasing $280,000 based on projected per DMs for inmates. The Horizon Behavioral Health, that's an increase of $7,512 compared to adopted 2020, and that's based on a state funding calculation. And those are primarily the biggest increases in our external service providers. So if you don't have any questions, we'll turn to 249, which is our transfers and non-departmental payments. Yes?
Is this idea on the list?
Thank you.
Under transfers, for city capital projects fund and the schools' capital projects funds, these are what is transferred to pay-as-you-go projects. So you'll see the difference there compared to adopted 2020. The city federal state aid, this is our match that we transfer for grants into the grant fund. It's an additional $38,000. The fleet fund, this is based on replacements with a $19,000 increase. And then we have a $77,000 reduction in the transfer to tech fund, and that's based on our LUMAS partnership and savings from our telecommunications. Under our non-departmental, our workman's comp, we're projecting a decrease of $56,000, a slight increase for retiree benefits for health insurance of $33,000, a small change in our line of duty act at $5,743. And then for the poverty initiative, we're not recommending funding there, so that's a $25,000 reduction. The fleet, this is our depreciation cost that the general fund pays. It's a reduction of $184,000. The salary and market adjustments of $2.9 million, that's about $308,000 less compared to 2020. Our water fund payment is up slightly. We have a health benefits, education, and add-to-seat, $50,000 that's new in this budget, and that's to assist employees with understanding their health benefits with the goal to reduce claims. We have a $15,000 reduction in the Workplace Safety and Wellness Program to $60,000, and then $125,000, that's new funding for Safety and Security Task Force. And they've been primarily looking in our buildings for ways to increase security. So we had to fund $125,000 based on their recommendations that we don't have yet. So that takes care of transfers and non-departmental. Anything?
You know, the salary and market adjustments, what we're gonna need to have broken out, I think, between essential and non-essential, of course. You know, some of the market adjustments are across the board. You know, I think we've had, the governor has defined certain things. Some things are essential and some things are non-essential within government. And so some of the things he's closed for the rest of the year, some things we know full well that we got to continue. And we need to make sure we address things that operate 24 hours a day, like public safety and public work. So if we can segregate those to make sure, you know, and especially at a time when, you know, you see massive layoffs and stuff, I mean, given large raises, 7%, 7.8% raises, probably isn't the best time to be doing that. So that needs to be segregated. The other item is the Security Task Force. That's a new program of 125,000. That needs to be on there. I think the new health benefits education, I think that should be on the list. Again, that's a new program. I understand the efficacy or the proposed efficacy of it, we just probably would need to see that a little more definitively, I think, before we roll with that.
I've got a question.
Yep.
I've just got a question about the fleet. And you've got the label depreciation there, but that's not truly a depreciation item. That's just transfers to fleet on some sort of actuarial basis that determines what each department needs to submit to fleet?
And it actually equates the depreciation number.
So on the, that makes sense, because we don't track depreciation on anything else.
Right. So it really covers our replacement costs.
True replacement costs.
But it's based on our depreciation number that we have to pay back to the fleet fund.
So the overall, and maybe we can talk about this during component units, but the overall, the overall amount has gone down 300,000, yet I remember that being a leading, one of the driving costs in all the departmental budgets as it was going up. So I'm still trying to get balanced on that.
Well, one would be replacements in the depreciation costs. In the departmental budgets, they're looking at maintenance for the actual vehicles assigned to those departments, their fuel costs, those type of things. And I'm sure that Chuck Kramer's here. When he talks about his fleet fund, he'll go into that more.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks.
Question, Donna. What are recruitment efforts?
That is money that has typically been used when we needed to replace a director or someone in a higher-level position, which we may need some of that.
Okay. All right.
So I would like to add, I'm sorry, Jeff, you may have mentioned this, the salary market adjustments, is that already on the list?
Yes.
And then poverty initiative, command that as well to the list. Natasha, I want to see that taken down to zero. And then tuition reimbursement, did you also add that to the list?
Yes.
I was just curious if you could, how is that accessed by folks?
It's accessed on a first-come, first-served basis through our Department of Human Resources.
Okay, so they, do they submit an application to their department head? Is that how that works?
Correct.
And then it's assessed based on what they, how it sort of dovetails with the jobs they're doing?
Absolutely.
Is that it? Okay. Thank you very much.
So is that on the list, or was that just a question?
That is, that was just a question.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, if there's no more items, debt service, these first several pages come straight from the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So I think we went over those when we talked about the report. So if you turn to page 263, this is where you'll see our debt service that's budgeted for fiscal year 2021. And that continues through page 266. We did our bond offering. These are based on our amortization schedules. The only thing I wanted to point out, now I can't find it. The line of credit, where we're thinking we'll need the line of credit is on page 266. There's some school projects that were not included in the bond funding that for out years that we might need to use some of that for roof replacements or HVAC projects. And then also in the water resources, there's some possible use of line of credit there. So those I wanted to point out to you. So if there's no questions, that's pretty much our debt service. And then it's, not me, Brian.
Okay, moving on to component units. Next Tuesday, School Superintendent Crystal Edwards will be here to discuss the school's operating budget with you. But today, we have the second half of component units, and Brian Booth is here from GLTC.
Good afternoon, Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Dolan, and members of council. I'm here today to present the FY2021 budget for the Greater Lynchburg Transit Company. I'll start out by saying that many things have changed in the world that we're living in right now, especially over the last month or so. And because of that, it's changed a lot of what we have been operating in, how we prepared this budget. So what I would like to do is present the budget as presented with the understanding that we are constantly looking at what is changing and how we're going to work within the financial constraints that we have. So I know this is kind of a shot in the dark, but we're, will, things are coming at us faster than we can process them. So to start out, the FY2021 budget is reduced 146,000, about 1.8% from the adopted FY20 budget. And this budget was prepared in an effort to maintain the current service that's provided to the city of Lynchburg and surrounding areas. GLTC currently operates fixed route and paratransit service throughout the city with 14 routes that operate Monday through Friday, or I'm sorry, Monday through Saturday from 5:15 AM to 10:15 PM. On page 276 is the actual budget, and I'll go through some of the major changes. On the expenses, our labor has been reduced approximately $98,000, and is mainly due to eliminated operator positions which are associated with a reduced Liberty service. One thing that I will point out is that that service, that reduction does not reflect the full amount of decrease because there has been salary adjustments incorporated into that. Our benefits have increased $20,000 over the adopted FY2020, and is mainly due to our projected healthcare cost increases. We generally see an 8% to 10% increase in healthcare costs year over year. Our services are increasing $18,000 due to an increase in external contracts. Our materials and supplies are decreasing approximately $112,000, and is reduced, is due to reduced maintenance and fuel expenses related to the reduced Liberty service that we anticipate. And then our miscellaneous expenses are increasing $9,000 due to additional training requirements to keep staff up to date with state and federal regulations. On our revenues, our fares decreased about $40,000 from what was adopted. However, I'll point out, it's only a $9,000 decrease from what we actually received in FY19. Our University of Lynchburg contract, that decreased $25,000. And what that was, that was due to the University of Lynchburg canceling the Universal Pass Agreement, but they are actually taking advantage of our bulk discount ticket program and purchasing passes that way to distribute to their students and staff. Other income has increased $106,000, and that is mainly due to Liberty increasing the amount that they put toward the Universal Pass Agreement for their students and staff to ride the fixed route system in the city. Our federal operating has increased $720,000 from the fiscal year 2020 adopted budget, and that is mainly due to our performance-based funding that we receive. We're eligible for some performance funds, being in the small urban area. I will note that that is, it's actually only a $320,000 increase from our actual allocation because we don't receive our actual funding allocation until after the budget is presented to council and adopted. Our state operating assistance is estimated to increase $35,000, and that is based off of what we've received currently this year. And that is our best guess. There's a lot of unknowns with that still. Fiscal year 2021 is the first year that, or sorry, the second year that the state is allocating the money 100% based on performance metrics. And I've talked with staff at the Department of Rail and Public Transportation, and they don't know how increases in ridership, changes in performance across the state are going to impact an individual's locations' funding formula from year to year. There also was the House Bill 1414 and Senate Bill 890 passed, which was to increase funding in transit. It was estimated 13.9 millions would go toward operating over the next four years. That since has been, I think, reconsidered with everything that's going on at the state. And so we don't know how that's going to play into this situation now. Our Liberty revenue decreased $1.1 million and is due to a combination of Liberty reducing service on their central campus and then also taking some of that service back in-house and utilizing their vehicles and their staff to operate that service. And the final item, actually, well, the city operating, we have submitted a flat budget, but the final item is that there was a return from fund balance that was submitted in the amount of about $319,000. And that was what was necessary to bridge the gap, to be able to maintain service as it currently operates today. What it would look like if we were not able to receive that amount is about a 10% reduction in service. And again, I've prepared this budget ahead of the pandemic and realized that we've got a lot of things to work through over the next few weeks and months coming, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Hegelsohn?
You mentioned the federal operating, the extra 720,000, is because of performance metrics. And so obviously, just looking at this budget over the last couple of years, some of those, most of, a lot of the performance metrics, and I can put words in, but were, I think, with the ridership with regarding Liberty and a huge amount of riders. And so now, if that contract has dropped to one, you know, by 1.1, 1.2 million, is that can be an ephemeral, one-time kind of shot in the arm as a performance metric? Or do you have, or no idea?
With the federal, the performance metrics that we received are on kind of a two-year lag period. So this current year for '20, we're seeing the hit in performance, and we're anticipating a major hit in fiscal year 23.
Okay. So with that, at least you have the ability to kind of plan. And so you see the revenue, extra revenue coming because of the performance metric. You know, some of the things that happened, this is well before you got here, but GLTC was, you know, kind of not doing very well. You know, Liberty kind of actually put in a pretty good contract, and it was very helpful for GLTC. Things were thriving, drivers were happy, and lots of stuff. Ridership was up. Some, it kind of helped to kind of fill a gap for a while. And so as you fill this gap, hopefully, and as this gap is being filled by this performance metric of the extra federal money, hopefully, that'll be a time to say, look, we're forecasting not just this year, but we're looking at a year or two down in advance when this money, this money as well is going to be gone. So hopefully, some of that will be utilized and saved, so it's not going back to the well as much as possible with that reserve. So a few years ago, when GLTC was in a crunch, there's a reserve that was established by the city taxpayers and funded by, you know, council to augment that. So as you see that coming, hopefully, you're planning on that. Are you, I guess?
Yes, we are looking at that. Just to kind of put it into perspective, the budgeted amount for '21 that we have of $2.69 million, of that amount, about 1.1 million is performance metric. So we know what we're looking at.
Okay.
And I anticipate in fiscal year '23, I believe that's the year, I have to look at my chart, that we would lose that entire amount, is what we're looking at. So we are forecasting out, and that's what we're looking to try to figure out how we make up for that in the future.
And the other element with that loss of revenue, as you show on the line, I realize it's somewhat made up by other ones, but when you lose 1.2 million of revenue from a contract from Liberty, that means, you know, less service, which means usually less operating expenses to provide that service. So I would assume that the expenditures would have gone down a whole lot more than what you have budgeted, and I'm sure you'll probably come back with that at a later time. But when you lose a $1.2 million contract, it's usually not, it's usually a lot more to be made up.
Yeah, the difficult piece that we're running into is the overhead. We still have to have a finance manager, we still have to have HR. So those costs don't change regardless of the number of vehicles on our roads. So we looked at our direct costs, and that's where we're struggling, is that overhead is still the same, but we weren't able to make up for the savings in the direct cost for operators as well as the fuel and maintenance.
So that wouldn't have been made up somewhat in labor? You know, for the labor of the drivers and the fuel and the operations?
Yeah, so in the labor, you'll see that there is a reduction of $98,000, and that's where that piece is made up. But what I'm pointing out in that section is, it doesn't reflect the full amount of the decrease because there has been wage increases over the year that is gonna eat some of that savings up.
And so if you were, I mean, so if you're on the other end of the equation, if you were charging 1.1, 1.2 million dollars for a service that was costing 98,000, you can see why somebody on the other end would say, hey, we can do it ourselves. So, but I'm sure there's other built-in overhead.
Yeah, there's other things in there, yeah.
So there should be other things that kind of are decreased, or otherwise, it looks pretty obvious why they would have left. So, anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Madam Mayor, no doubt, since you put this budget proposal together, a lot has happened with the world oil markets. Do you, can you comment briefly about how that would impact the rest of this year in terms of your expenses and how likewise, whether you expect it might generate some savings going into next year?
Yeah, not offhand as far as numbers, but we are looking at potentially seeing if we can lock in a price for fuel since it has dropped pretty drastically. But I don't have those numbers right offhand as far as what that would look like. And what I will say is those numbers are not factored in.
Sure.
To this, to what's presented.
This was before?
Yeah.
Saudi Arabia and Iran and the COVID-19 impact. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So last, I'm gonna come up with the last meeting or the meeting before that, a list of about $6 million worth was shared with us for potential replacement funds for lost revenue. And I think GLTC's reserve was included in that amount of 1, is it 1.35 million? Is that about right?
I think that's about the right number.
So if we were to lean on that reserve either in whole or in part, what would the consequence of that be?
My understanding, and I'll look to Donna for some clarification just to make sure, is that that reserve has been, surpluses that GLTC has received in the past over fiscal years has been paid back to the city and is being held to use toward the local match for capital for GLTC.
That's correct.
Correct, okay.
That's correct.
So it's, you would be looking at pulling from the local match of future capital projects?
Understood. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Pera?
I know we haven't opened the CFP yet, but do you have any upcoming capital projects? You've gone through a slew of big ones.
There are two small ones. One of them was about 504,000, which would be about a $50,000 share, and cannot think of the other one, Bonnie, right offhand. Do you?
The same order of magnitude?
It's less than that. I think, actually, no, it's, it was shelter projects, that's what it was. And I think it was about 160,000, so looking at the local share is about 10%.
But no?
Nothing major.
$12 million projects coming up?
Nothing major for the next couple of years. It's fairly small.
How does this budget affect routes and times?
As far as this current, what's presented?
This upcoming, this presented budget?
The presented budget is, would maintain the service that is currently being operated prior to the COVID pandemic. We did reduce service by about 25% a couple of weeks ago, just ridership had dropped off, anticipating staff, staffing issues, so we did reduce service. But the intent would be, once we get through this pandemic, we would restore service back to what it was prior, so.
Are you not seeing any savings in this year's budget because of that drop in service? I guess you're still employing everybody. Did you furlough drivers, or what?
We have not furloughed drivers. We place them on the extra board. And the other piece that we are running into is we're also subject to the Families First Coronavirus Act, which offers the sick leave. So we're trying to figure out how that's gonna play into this budget. So we're being conservative and cautious. The other piece that we had to do as well with reducing routes, but we also limited the capacity of buses to non-passengers, which on some of our heavier routes, we're putting extra buses out to kind of tag along and pick up what the people that are left during the peak times.
So no appreciable decrease in expenses, but a loss of revenue?
Nothing that I can attribute as far as giving you a number today. I would anticipate there is some decrease, but I can't pinpoint a number today. Thanks.
But you will also keep some of that?
Yes.
With the FF-CRA?
Yeah, that's what we're looking at and trying to figure out how, the process for that.
Brian, you do have a bus replacement in here.
Is there a bus replacement for next year?
There is. We have nine heavy-duty and six light-duty for '21, unless that's changed. We'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I'm thinking that that's, something, something doesn't look right about that.
Oh, you're right. I looked the wrong.
Okay. I was like, wait a second, that, okay.
You're right. Sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions, thoughts? All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
On page 277, the Lynchburg Business Development Center did not request any funding, so that's pretty easy. Fleet Services begins on page 200, on page 2, on 280. And Chuck Kramer, Fleet Director, is here to present his budget finally.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, the department proposed budget for 2021 is $8.2 million and represents a 22.4% increase or $1.5 million compared to FY20. There's salaries and benefits, $82,000 increase, contractual services, $15,000, a $21,000 decrease in internal service charges, a $28,000 increase in other charges, $908,000 increase in capital outlay from the replacement schedule. This next increase is actually not an increase, it's $485,000, excuse me, it's for a replacement fund, for future funds. It's actually through water resources. And the reason it's a full increase, it's a full impact of the money going in there because we didn't cover it as a line-up prior. And then a $17,500 decrease in non-departmental, departmental employee benefits, and a $19,000 increase in debt service. That pretty much covered it, so I know that y'all have a whole bunch of questions for me.
Councilmember Wright? Thank you.
Would you be able to outline the $900,000 capital outlay? I know that's, that's just the sort of standard replacement, you know, on the schedule. Can you sort of share more about what's included in that?
Oh, absolutely. I'll start with the big increase. The big increase is we have to replace two pumpers this year, and they're about $630,000 apiece. We also have an ambulance, and those three are just for the fire department. And then in some other large ones, we have three, what they call knuckle booms, and one is an addition for the new refuse initiative. And there's three replacements, or I'm sorry, two replacements and one addition.
Okay.
And just those six vehicles are about $2.18 million. Yeah.
Thank you.
There's actually 55 vehicles overall, and the remaining vehicles don't equal that.
Wow. Thanks, Joe.
So those are the K4, our budgets transferred into your budget, though, correct? correct?
Uh, no, sir. That's what the depreciation is.
So there's a consistent number for all the departments, relatively consistent, it's gonna fluctuate depending on how much equipment that department has. If they're adding to their equipment or replacing the equipment, that number could go up. If they're removing equipment, then that number could go down.
And it depends on
And then you operate it as a fund, basically, as a, you just operate it as a fund. You've got a certain amount of revenue coming in on an annual basis, and you've got to borrow and do whatever you need to do to, to provide the vehicle stock, I guess, right?
Yes, sir. Now, the difference, you say relatively distributed or even, it's not the case because if a vehicle is not replaced, so depreciation, we call it for eight years, we're supposed to have this vehicle, or 12 years, we're supposed to have this vehicle. You spread the depreciation over those 12 years. Well, if you don't replace it until year 15, for three years, they're not paying it, so when it comes up, it looks like a major increase when you start it again.
That's a good point.
But it's really not. Yes, sir.
Well, I love the science of what you and your department does and how you do it, and how you work to save the city money, and how you know when, when it just becomes not, no longer cost-effective to operate a piece of equipment, existing equipment, is to replace it. Tell me about the, so the, the unassigned, the unassigned fund balance in the previous year, that was a transfer out, how, help me, help me get my head around what, what happened there in the adopted '20 versus, versus this year?
I'm sorry, where, oh, the
You use a fund balance in '20.
The future vehicle needs, is that what you're talking about?
Under revenues. So there's a contra-revenue, basically, in 2020.
Oh, that's the, that's the difference in depreciation and vehicle replacement costs. So you're not, because of the time of the year that the vehicles may come in, if I order a pickup truck, it can be here in two to three weeks. But if, not now, but normally it could be two to three weeks. But if I order a dump truck, it may be eight months, it could be 15 months.
Right.
So the, when we calculate our depreciation, we account for that, so we're not taking in those funds for six months out of that year. So it starts later on.
So that's
So that difference.
An adjustment account, basically.
Yes.
And also, like, for Water Resources, they're paying their depreciation into the fund, and then based on how many vehicles need replaced, that number gets pulled out of that fund balance. So if, if more than depreciation, then they're gonna pull from that fund balance. If it's less than what their depreciation cost is, they're gonna put money into that. So it is kind of a balancing account, but a lot of the money that's sitting there is Water Resources based on how they pay into that fund.
So it's not budgeted, but it was budgeted in '20. So when you know what it's gonna be, I guess you put it in the budget, but in this case, you're just gonna assume it's zero?
I do not understand what you just said.
All right, so, and do you budget for this, or is it just the way it falls out?
It's the way it falls out.
That's the way it falls out.
All right, so then, so it shouldn't be in the adopted 2020 line, unless
Yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't a use or addition that we needed to make for Water Resources, because that's predominantly what that's for, so.
Okay, all right, all right. I'm going down a rabbit hole that I don't think really makes a difference in the grand scheme of things. It's a balancing number, thanks. All right. So thank you for explaining why vehicle costs went up. Basically, it's telling me that departments are making use of their vehicles for a longer period of time, to such a point that you determined that, you know, you've kept it running for beyond their depreciable lives, and, and now it's time to do some replacement, when it is, it's a big jump.
Yes, sir.
Makes sense. Thanks for explaining that.
Councilmember Robber?
Copy that 907 amount, just a printout of that subset of that information, the 907, 783, the increase in capital delays, just a printout, yeah, a printout of that, yes. Thank you, appreciate it. I didn't write it down fast enough, yes.
Any further questions? Councilmember Hegelstein?
You know, and I think this would be one that, you know, staff is working on and coming back in a week or two with new numbers, so I'm sure you're gonna, as Councilmember Perro was saying, there's lots of different moving parts, to make sure that comes back with what is needed. The one, only question on here with regarding the budget, I realize the salaries, this one is one of the largest that I've seen without having extra people, and that looks like about a 9% salary increase from last year to this year. So was there new people added, or is that part of the benchmarks and all those kind of things? No new people I didn't see.
Over last year, the only thing that has changed is, well, it was actually throughout this current year, was that we took a part-time position and made it full-time, but that was in last year's budget.
Yeah, it looks like up on the, the full-time equivalents are still 11.36.
Correct, yeah.
So that's something to, you know, to look at. So the, and then with, with these capital purchases, hopefully, you know, some of those items are gonna be looked at very strenuously, you know, some of those things that are needed. You know, as I'm sitting up here, I just had to bring a little bit of levity, no offense by this, but Bo and I are the only ones that could not take offense to it, but there's a joke that it says when a politi, how do you know a politician is lying? And it says, when you see their lips moving. And so I think some people maybe took it, took a little bit more, so anyway, I just thought I'd bring a little bit of, a little bit of levity on the equation, so uh, anyway, thank you very much.
If I may, when we talk about the cuts, as I mentioned in the beginning, those six large pieces of equipment, I could remove the entire rest of my replacement schedule and not equal those numbers. So I will definitely take a hard look at it, but those vehicles are public safety as well.
So those are the ones that I'm sure you've looked at, and I'm sure we're looking at making sure we keep our streets clean with the knuckle boom, making sure we're keeping our city safe with the fire trucks, the pumper, the pumpers as well as the ambulance that you mentioned. And so it's the other things. And so if the other things are small, and you know, there are certain things, like in times of trouble, people say, well, I'm gonna wait another year to buy another car or another vehicle. So the things that can happen, I'm sure you'll look at that, just like every other department will. And if you come up with ones that you can do, great. If there's ones that you can't, I'm sure staff will say, here's what we can do, and here's what we can't. And, you know, I don't think we're, we can go
Yeah, we just need to understand that kicking the can down the road in terms of replacing vehicles costs more in maintenance, and Chuck looks very closely at the replacement list relative to the maintenance costs.
Which is actually why we have two pumpers this year, because when I, if you remember when I first came on board, every year I've replaced a pumper. But two of the ones that I put into the schedule never got replaced because we have American LaFrance trucks that during that time, you can't get parts for them anymore. We have a ladder truck right now that we had to manufacture the whole front suspension because we can't buy it.
Because we just had a ladder truck on Station 6 that was done a few months ago, and then we had a more recent one at Fire Station 3, where you had another ladder truck. And 6 was less than a year ago.
You're talking purchase?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and put into service.
That was a pumpers, yes.
Okay.
No ladder trucks. Ladder trucks are one and a half million.
And we do bond pump, bond bumper trucks as well. So the impact in here would be an increase to debt service.
Yeah. And again, looking at the, the other things that we're not even talking about. The big ones, obviously, we know, and we can say, you know, they have need, but hopefully you'll be looking at the others.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Frymore.
The airport fund will be presented by Andrew Legala. This is his first budget presentation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the airport's 2021 proposed enterprise budget. If you please turn to page 285, the draft budget for '21 was developed based on the strong financial performance of Lynchburg Airport over the past year. Under the city manager's projected '21 column, you'll see total revenues for 2021 are projected to be at $2,985,333, which is an increase of 6% for the year compared to last year. Operating revenue increased mainly due to landing fees being up by 13.6%, terminal revenues, including parking lot and rent of cars. That's expected at 5.4%. In '19, we had a record parking lot revenues of $885,709. Revenue growth primarily is the result of recent increase in flights, which you've heard me talk about pretty often, the frequency and the equipment upgrades from American. Expenses were projected to be in line at $2,822,884, with the exception of an increased marketing and air service development expense associated with promoting the new American Airlines service and continuing efforts to attract a second airline. Therefore, I'm sorry, there were also some non-recurring capital projects and equipment increases that funded, that were funded through the state. We have an 80/20 ratio, that was about 200,000. So the bottom line, the annual operating budget surplus was projected at $162,349. If you turn to page 284, those budget projections were based on airport passenger traffic up in '19, which was, you know, 12.2% over '18. We were at 185,000 passengers last year. So airline seats are up 7%, and the 2020 revenues are projected to increase 8.9%. Now, with that said, that's the proposed budget as it's presented in front of you. Obviously, there's major changes going on right now. At that, I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions, I can speak to where I think we will be here at the end of the fourth quarter for '20. And also, I'll take a stab at how we're gonna be in '21. I think if I can project this, I might be, pretty much have the numbers. Sure. Okay, so for our current status right now, projected for the end of the year, here at the third quarter, fourth quarter, we have an 85% reduction. That's seven flights at 75%. You've heard me say that here for a couple of months, that we were doing really well. Now we're down to about three flights and at about 15% passenger loads. So we're pretty low right now. We projected, we're actually projecting 3.2 million for '20, for this coming year. But with, with the COVID-19 impact, we pretty much are at $2,941,308. So that's a total reduction of about $301,000. With that said, if you minus out the 196 surplus, that puts us at about a deficit of about $105,083. So with that, I already worked my staff, and the reductions we're doing in, in expense side of it is, we've curtailed $75,000 in small projects. That's the one I was mentioning with the state, which is 80/20. So we took about $75,000 of those projects we were gonna do between now and then, and just stopped those. We don't have to do them, we wanted to do them, we had the surplus to do them, so we're not gonna do that. We had our public safety at 16 hours a day, and we've curtailed them back to 12 hours a day since we're only at three flights. And I left it at 12 hours because we do get 100% reimbursement with TSA at the 12 hours, so I didn't want to lose that reimbursement. So basically, that's a $7,000 savings for the four hours over the three months. We also took down 10,000 in marketing, so we pretty much just halted the marketing right now because you can't really market if you're not traveling. So, and then we, we actually are saving 20,000 since we had a really good year with snow, in our snow expenses. So if you add all that up, that'll come out to about $112,200, which actually puts us a little bit ahead of our deficit. So we should be somewhere near around a $6,000 or $7,000 surplus, give or take, plus or minus, at the end of this year. So we won't have to at all tap into our 1.1 net reserves, 1.1 million net reserves. Would you like me to speak to '21, or do you have any questions?
Councilmember Perro?
Yes, sir.
And that's a great summary. That's a
Thank you.
well done.
Thank you.
As, as far as taking the, taking the steps to, well, you're taking the revenue hit, and then therefore, therefore taking the steps that you need to take to reduce your, your expenses, and then despite all odds, working to finish, you know, in the black, which is excellent. Thank you. Did I hear something through the grapevine about some potential federal funding helping out, or?
I was gonna touch on that as soon as I finished the '21 projected.
Well, we'll go through your '21 projected, and then
Which will kind of help me explain
Yes, sir.
where we would be in that. Okay. So for '21, now, keep in mind, this is completely projected. So if we look at our current condition right now, at three flights, well, let me just say one to three flights, because you're gonna hear tonight that we had no flights today. Today, we, the one flight we did have, because we're averaging around one to three, that one was canceled. Passenger loads are so low that they moved passengers to yesterday or to tomorrow, and basically canceled that one flight for today. That's our first one that we've had. But we're averaging one to three flights, that's, that's the plan for American, for the schedule for the entire month of April. April, yes, that's what I meant. And then May, we should get a more confirmed schedule of what we're gonna have. But I anticipate we're still gonna be at one to three until this thing is over. So if I'm looking conservatively, I'm projecting passenger loads as soon as this is over, and of course, we start July 1st, and the first quarter, I would say we'll probably start out the quarter pretty much where we are right now. I took it at worst-case scenario, and I trajectory it out to the three months, the end of the first quarter, that we'd probably be close to 25% passenger loads. I think that would be very conservative, because as soon as this is over, businesses are gonna open, and passengers, passengers are gonna start traveling. We already know that. Now, how quickly we get the frequency, I'll be working with American closely to make sure we get as much frequency back as quick as we can, as long as we can fill those airplanes. But for, for the '21 numbers, I'm looking at 25% for first quarter, and then I'm increasing it to 60% on second quarter, 80% third quarter, and 100% fourth quarter. Now, keep in mind, when I give you those percentages, I mean 100% as in up to the 75% that we originally had before this all started, not 100% full airplane. We've just never gotten there, so I wouldn't even project to go out that far. That'll put us at a deficit if we add all four of those quarters collectively. It'll put us at a deficit of about $465,000. So we look at the expense side of this. On the expense side, I've got a full-time position at $49,000 that I don't need to fill right now. I've also got a part-time position at $14,000 I don't need to fill. I had budgeted 200,000 in the state projects, as you'll see in the proposed budget in front of you. I had 200,000 proposed, so we don't need to do those projects. Those are real good projects. The airport is in very good shape. I don't have to do those projects, and I can hold those off for another year if I need to. They're not critical, they're not safety, and they're not security in nature. So the airfield is in great condition right now, and I can easily push that one year. And also, I took out the 20,000, which would be the cost for the raises for 2021. If you add that all together, it'll come out to $317,000. Add back in the 162 we proposed as a surplus, and that'll put us at about plus or minus 14,000 in the surplus. Now, again, that is a complete guesstimate, but I think I have enough on the expense side that I can offset the loss I'm gonna have in my revenues, and may or may not have to touch our 1.1 million reserves next year for '21. And I would hope by the end of next year, we are flying and we are in good shape. Now, with that said, Councilmember Perro, what you mentioned on the stimulus, so the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act 2020 that just got pushed out, that has $10 billion slated for airports. I won't try to go through the math on that because it's very, very difficult, but I am in close communication with FAA and trying to figure out the formulas on how airports are going to get what money they're going to get. With that said, it's all a ratio. One of them's a ratio between debt service and our combined debt service. I take that back. Our debt service to the combined debt service of all airports. There's a ratio there. There's a special form that we fill out each year. It's the 127 FAA form, and it tells us all of our financials. And that's how the FAA is gonna take that number, and they're gonna take it from our 2018 numbers, which we, we did pretty well in '18 also. So there's a debt ratio that they're gonna try to figure out. Then there's another ratio between unrestricted Then there's another ratio between unrestricted cash to debt service, and then there's some entitlement calculations. So, talking to my peer airports and talking with the FAA, the FAA is already, I'm not going to say confirmed, but has strongly advised that it will not take months, it will take weeks before we get this stimulus, whatever this stimulus is. The stimulus can range from our, my projection here and talking with FAA and talking with some peer airports on what they think they're going to get, because they have to present also where their budgets are going. I'm feeling pretty comfortable that we may be somewhere near the three hundred thousand range. If you start looking at our debt and how low our debt is compared to how many other airports and their debt ratios, we're sitting in a very good position, and that, that ratio is looked at on this relief, if you would. So, other than that, I'm looking at about three twenty-five to three hundred and fifty thousand. There was some discussion on the two billion appropriated for our entitlement calculations, and our entitlement each year with FAA is a million and fifty thousand. I'm not saying we're going to get that, but I'm just looking way on the conservative side, that if we're anywhere near a quarter of a million, we'll be sitting pretty comfortable for next year. So, that would easily add to our net reserves of the one point one million we already have. So, I feel very comfortable we'll finish this year very good, and I feel very comfortable we'll finish next year if these projections are, you know, that they'll hold. But that's, that's about the best I can project on how we'll be next year.
So, some of those, the numbers, the extra positions.
Yes, sir.
I mean, he already said that they're being pulled, those extra positions, right? Do we need to put those on?
He'll see that in the replies.
Good. So, that'd be, so we don't need to put it on the list since it's already voluntarily pulled.
I didn't want to get too far ahead. I just wanted to be prepared.
Yeah. Good deal. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
When I went by there the other day, you know, obviously, you, you mentioned the airport parking revenue and whatnot, which is nonexistent. I, I was surprised to see so many cars. I was surprised to see so many cars that were parked in the employee-only park. Is that?
Okay. Great question.
Hopefully, that's.
No, great question.
For renting of cars or something, not, there's that four hundred employees.
No, no, it's a great question, actually. So, we were reached out by the rent of cars.
Okay.
For some, some assistance.
Yep.
And that was the easiest lot to.
Yep.
Fill for them, and we gave them some extra spots because there's many, many cars right now not being rented.
Yeah.
And we thought that would work real good on, look good on us if we could help them with some, and there's some extra parking up by the tower also.
And, and I have a friend that went out of, out of the country a while ago, and, and I know he's got stuck out there. And, and so, I'm, I'm wondering if he parked his car there. The revenue may go up because he's been parked there for, you know, a month and a half. Who knows when he'll be back, so.
Oh, really? Now, I will tell you, I mean, the airport is open, it's active, there's lots of planes flying, you know, we still have the whole general aviation side, they're still, they're still flying, towers open, so we have, everything's still going, it's just the airline service that we're hurting right now.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Mitchell is going to present on the water fund sewer. He introduced to you last week prior to the public hearing, so he will go do a review of the water fund and stormwater fund.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I just want to start by thanking all our water resources employees, their dedicated frontline employees that have, that are providing essential services to every citizen every minute of every day. And right now, our workload has increased pretty significantly at a time that our absenteeism is pretty high, so they're really going above and beyond, and I really just appreciate all the work that they're doing and very grateful for each of them. Just kind of, since I'm presenting three enterprise funds, there's a few points that I'll make that are applicable to all funds. Overall, each fund is doing well. All three funds have submitted meet council's fiscal policies and, and their CSO consent order financial requirements. Just looking at air revenues and consumptions for the remainder of this year and next year, right now, our actual consumption, water consumption is actually up a little, and we're not anticipating any decrease in consumption numbers for next year.
Oh, extra hand washing?
Oh, extra hand washing, yes, absolutely. So, while people are not frequenting restaurants and everything, they're at home and they're using water at home versus using water out. So, we're really not seeing any decrease. Now, that could change if there's a major industry that closes or shuts down for a period of time, but we're not anticipating that. We've been in contact with a lot of the industries, and, and they're, most of them are planning on remaining open. Just one interesting fact, over the last decade, our commercial and industrial water use has increased by more than ten percent, but despite our population growth, our domestic or residential use has decreased by nine point six percent. So, overall, our water consumption has remained pretty steady for the last decade. We do provide wholesale water and sewer services to the three surrounding counties, and they actually own capacity in the wastewater plant and then sewer interceptor lines. Two big, two big challenges that we have continue to face are infrastructure and personnel. You know, I've mentioned before, their goal is to replace or renew one percent of the buried infrastructure annually. Right now, we're about half of that, so that's a two-hundred-year lifespan, and they're, we're really, that's not sustainable, so we really need to be continuing to look at that. And then as far as staffing goes, recruitment and retention is still a challenge. Over the last three years, we've had sixty-seven percent turnover in our field operations. That's the employees that are providing the sixty-seven percent. That's the employees that are on, they're out maintaining the water lines and sewer lines and storm lines. And then we also have challenges recruiting technical and mechanical maintenance positions. We've been trying to fill critical wastewater treatment plant maintenance positions for over two years now and have, have not been successful. Moving on to the water fund budget, that begins on page two ninety-seven. Page three oh one provides a more detailed breakdown of the anticipated revenues, so I'll quickly go through those. Overall, revenues are expected to be relatively flat, decreasing by about thirty-eight thousand dollars to fifteen million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The biggest decrease in the water sales is about eighty-six thousand dollars due to slightly decrease in consumption trends, and I know, just to note that water consumption, despite the coronavirus and everything else, is very weather-dependent, so if we have a very wet year, water consumption will be down. If it's dry, it'll be up. Other revenues and charges for services category anticipated to only vary slightly. In water contracts, the primary change is anticipated to be associated with the increase in West, in West Rock's water use, and, and we have been in communication with them, and they expect that to continue as well. It should be noted that with the closing of the Central Virginia Training Center, sales to Amherst County will be very minimal, if not go away entirely, because they're, they're about the only customer on the, on the line from us. We're also anticipating a reduction in interest earnings of about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, and I'll pause there if there's any question on revenues before we go into expenses. On page three oh two, you'll find a detailed breakdown of water fund expenses, and I'll review the highlights on page three oh three. Overall expenses are expected to decrease by five hundred and four thousand dollars to eighteen million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. These are primarily due to the, the net of the following. Contract, contractual services are expected to increase by about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. This is primarily associated with roof inspections of our facilities and cellular charges associated with new meter technology. Air chemical prices are, prices are also increasing by about fifty-two thousand dollars as a result of recent bid prices. For example, fluoride alone is increasing by eighty percent. The operating budget is also being reduced by four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and this is primarily due to funding the water meter replacements and the cellular technology out of the water capital fund instead of the water operating budget. Before, we've incrementally replaced some water meters, so we've had budgeted money in there. Now, we're doing a more wholesale project, so it's a more, meets the capital criteria for funding. And then there's a net decrease of eighty-six thousand dollars shown in non-depart, in the non-departmental line item, and that's just a balance of salary adjustments versus last year. Any questions on the water fund? And I'm talking about the sewer fund, I'm not going to go into the, the details about the proposed rate increases. I will cover the revenues and expenditures very briefly. Overall, total revenues are expected to increase by two hundred and seventeen thousand to twenty-three million, four hundred and twelve thousand. Again, that's associated with two percent sewer rate increase and the other increases that we talked about. Sewer contracts are expected to be down by five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and that's due to a one-time capital payment from Campbell County's Utility and Service Authority for purchasing capacity in the Burton Creek Interceptor and additional sewer capacity. One significant revenue item that we have little control over is septic collar charges over the last few years. This has increased significantly due to leachate disposal at, from landfills. It can vary from one million up to two and a half million dollars, and we budgeted about one point two five million dollars this year. Most of the revenue variations are relatively minor, and if there's any questions on revenues, I'll stop there.
I do have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Eric, I was, I was reading your, I was reading, I guess, your water line breaks when, when you're talking about the revenue from septic, from septic and leachate. Where is that again?
It, it shows up in the, let me get to that page.
Three eleven on, on the revenues, or are there septic haulage charges on three one three?
If you go to page three thirteen, it's under septic collar charges. And we, this past year and this current year, we're at two point three million, and this could go away entirely tomorrow if they decided to, if they found another source. For example, Maplewood landfill in Amelia County is their biggest user, and they haul about eight to ten truckloads, tanker truckloads of waste here a day and dispose of it here.
All right. So, what I understand is we're one of the few facilities in the region, I mean, a large region that actually takes septic and, and, and leachate. Is that correct?
Yes. So, the leachate, a lot of, this happened, started a few years ago with the leachate because they were disposing of it at the Richmond wastewater plant. And Richmond, the Richmond plant started having a lot of violations and the, and it is a result of their disinfection system. They, they use UV disinfection, ultraviolet light disinfection, and it doesn't work well with leachate. So, we use sodium hypochlorite, and we have not seen any negative impacts of the leachate at our facility. So, it's been, been great for us overall because it's a good source of revenue.
Well, I'm just wondering if you've got a, a good demand scenario when you could increase your, increase your fees for disposing of it if there are less options out there for disposal and have that as a, as a, as a profit center, as a.
Well, and it essentially is because we're, we're actually charging pretty high rates right now. It's the truck haul waste rate, so a six-thousand gallon tanker load is about five hundred dollars per load. Our concern is if we raise it too high, they will start seeking out other, other sources. And we, one of the things that we've been looking at is trying to enter into some sort of contract with some of these haulers so that we kind of lock it in. Right now, we're kind of at, you know, if they decide to go somewhere else, and they have looked at other facilities that could take it, but if they decide to go somewhere else, we would lose the entire amount of revenue, so we want to, we're trying to secure that revenue and ma, and make it more consistent. But again, that's also weather-dependent, too. That increases with rainfall as well.
And the fact that festivals aren't canceled.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I just think it's an opportunity, and I like that idea of contracting because then that would even out your revenue stream.
Right.
A little bit, and, and also give you some predictability about how you're operating your plants, too.
Right.
So, all right. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. Let's see. As far as other revenues, that's it for the revenues. Any more questions on the revenues for the sewer fund?
Councilmember Hagelson?
You, you know, I know that you said you weren't going to go on into the, the rate study, but, you know, to me, I thought it was pretty evident that the rate study is a function of average income or per capita income or some median household income or whatever that number is.
Median household.
Median household income. And so, if we now are fairly close, and then we now have, you know, ten million people getting laid off across the country, and thousands getting laid off in Virginia and a lot getting laid off in Lynchburg, to me, that seems like it would have a tendency to drive down average, median household income, or at least be a, put downward pressure on there. And so, it would seem like there were, if there was, if there wasn't much of a, a trouble there, your estimate was that it was going to increase. If now we have this huge external force that is putting lots of pressure on the, the local economy, where we had hundreds of people getting laid off really quickly, has to have a downward pressure on, on average household income. So, to me, it would seem like if, if possible, that you could come up with a revenue-neutral sewer rate as this is coming. I know we had the public hearing on raising it, and I know you mentioned it was, you know, small, but I think as, you know, Councilmember Wright said, you know, it's probably not the best time to be raising anything on people, you know, albeit you may need to, we totally realize, but it would be nice to be able to take a, a deeper look at that, recognizing that downward pressure on median household income.
And, and we have been talking about that there. Again, the, when we actually do, the calculation will be December of two thousand and twenty-one, so one of the, our concerns is that we're, we're right on that bubble right now as far as whether we're in compliance or not. And a lot of that has come because we have had good growth in revenue and median household income over the last four years since we had the last sewer rate increase. And we had, our rates were probably about one point three, one point three-five percent above the median household income four years ago, and so that gap has slowly closed over the years, over the last four years, so.
And you don't have to answer that now, but I just, I just hope you'll, you'll, you'll look at that going forward.
Right.
Throughout this process.
Yep. And, and again, it's, it's an estimate at this point, and we don't know exactly what it's going to be like a year and a half now.
And so, if it's an estimate, to me, it almost seems like you could estimate on the side of, you know, the rate payer, and you could almost estimate on the fact of understanding, you know, without losing the consent order and whatnot. So, you, you would think, as much help as the federal government is doing, whether it be the airport or whether it be GLTC, the last two items that were being discussed.
Right.
You know, you'd think they would have a little bit of flexibility if we, you know, missed it by a nickel, so just a thought.
From an operational standpoint, I think we can make it work if we did not have the rate increase.
Good. Thank you.
Can I ask, when, when would we really know about the downward pressure of our median household income? I mean, we, we can see some things, but.
So, as part of our emergency operations plan, we have a, a group called the Long-Term Recovery and Mitigation Group, and they are looking at the economics of this pandemic and projecting what the future might look like based on what they know, which is extraordinarily difficult, as you might imagine. I don't have a good answer for you.
I'm just.
But we are looking at, we're looking at data.
Okay. That, that's what I'm asking. We're looking at the data, okay, not just assumptions, but yeah, we, we're looking at.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
All right. Moving on to expenses briefly. Overall, expenses are expected to increase by a hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars to twenty-four million, two hundred and twelve thousand. And the primary reason for that, the, similar to the water fund, chemical prices are increasing, so we're expecting about a twenty-five thousand dollar increase there. Sixty-five thousand dollar decrease in utilities. Right now, the big project at the wastewater plant is actually buying water from the water fund. Typically, they use their treated wastewater for process flow, so they're buying about a million gallons per day right now from the water fund for operational needs, and that's just for a portion of the construction project. Eighty-six thousand dollar increase in contractual services associated with sewer lining contractors, a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar increase in indirect cost payment to the general fund, and another fifty thousand dollar increase in payments to the water fund for air, for water fund services to the sewer fund. And there's a decrease of five hundred thousand dollars in pay-as-you-go transfers from two point five to two million, and finally, about a two hundred and one thousand dollar increase in debt service. So, any additional questions on the sewer fund? So any additional questions on the sewer fund? All right, moving on to the stormwater fund. That fund, the budget begins on page three nineteen. And again, I'll start with the revenues, and you'll find them on page, in detail on page three twenty-one. Overall, total revenues are expected to decrease slightly by forty thousand dollars to three hundred and forty-nine million, or three hundred, excuse me, three million four hundred and ninety, I'll get that right in a minute, three million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Some of the variances that need to be mentioned, we recently discussed with council about issuing refunds to some citizens and some households that are in the wrong tier. We'll be adjusting tiers to get houses in the proper tier beginning July first. Additionally, as a result of a recent outcome of a recent, of a court case between the city of Roanoke and Norfolk Southern, we will begin billing railroads for ballasted areas July first. So that, that was, that court case finished up last year and was settled. Other, other than that, some decrease in interest earnings, and that's essentially it for variances in the stormwater revenues. I'll be glad to answer any questions on the revenues. About a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Moving on to expenses, and they can be found on page three twenty-four, and I'll cover the highlights on page three twenty-five. Overall, stormwater expenses are expected to increase by four hundred and fifty-eight thousand to four million four thousand dollars, primarily related to that or under salaries and benefits. We are requesting an additional stormwater planner position. Stormwater is an area where there's significantly increase in regulations, and we have also a significant challenge with our infrastructure. We, over the last fifty years or so, there's been relatively little improvements to the storm system. And so we're, the planner would be looking at the regulations in a particular area as well as the infrastructure needs and coming up with more of a master plan, and so we can use our money as cost-effectively as, as we can. There's also a thirty-four thousand dollar decrease in contractual services, and that's kind of a result of the cyclical nature of our permits. A hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar increase in other charges as a result of community development charges and indirect cost payment to the general fund. And then pay-as-you-go transfers will increase by two hundred thousand dollars from three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. And an additional increase in debt service of fifty thousand dollars related to capital projects associated with the Chesapeake Bay compliance. Be glad to answer any questions on the stormwater fund.
Councilmember Hagelson?
So we had allowance for uncollectible accounts of twenty thousand budgeted, and now you've dropped that substantially, so to five thousand. I mean, basically, it's in the Waterville, so.
Right.
It seems like it, that, the, it's not that we had a real decrease in the lack of uncollectible accounts, but it was just the fact that the twenty thousand was a pretty big placeholder because we can shut off water and its bill directly if they don't pay it?
Correct, yeah, and we've just been looking at that over the years and that we figured, we thought that twenty thousand was too high.
Okay, good deal. So, and you've done it based on how much you have not collected on, or?
Correct.
And I'm sure most of it you can collect on, and you just shut the water off and eventually gets collected, so, okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Could you, could, just, if you can, you didn't highlight, I know you looked at the budget and whatnot, but the, the better thing would probably be your, your priorities and your goals and your attainment, like you have on three twenty-seven of what you've had for others. If you can maybe use this time to stress the highlights that were good.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, stress the highlights of?
Well, I mean, you know, three twenty-seven, you said, hey, here's our goal. We wanted to get, I guess these are educational events. I thought this was going to be on something like the cleanliness of the stormwater because you separated so many CSO projects, or the stormwater has been.
Well, I saw one, on the, on the water side, there's a stat that shows your water line breaks were significantly down this year. I don't know if that's because it didn't get quite as cold as it got last year or an indication of your inventory is in better condition than it was over the years.
And, and a lot of that is we are focusing our water line replacements on areas where we have had the most breaks. So we are seeing an improvement there, but it was a mild winter, so. And, you know, the, the performance measures that we have here probably don't accurately reflect what we, what we really do because we track hundreds of, of metrics all the time to see how we're doing. And so these are not really all-inclusive of what we do by any, any means.
I guess the reason is just you started it by highlighting about the dedication of the employees.
Right.
Of what they've done, they've showed up. And so if you had something that you'd like to say, hey, here's actually a metric that they've done this last year, you know, if that's.
We, we will definitely look at the, the metrics.
Something that I miss, Ms. Mitchell, is the, is the annual report that you all did. Now, I understand that it was a nice report, there's expense associated with that, and there's significant time associated with that. I'm not sure if it met a regulatory stipulation or requirement. I don't think it did, or else you would have continued doing them. But it did have a lot of nice information in there, and it was something that, you know, I actually used as references for other utilities in the area.
And, and we are, we are going back to that. We, before, it was more on a calendar year basis. Now, we're going to do it on a fiscal year basis, a report out and really look at our metrics. We have a new strategic plan that we, that we're going to tie into the report. So our goal, of course, will be off council at this time, but our goal is to do a, an update in August or September to council so we can get into, in a little more detail than we did right in the middle of the budget process. So we're kind of retooling it, reworking it, and tying it into our strategic plan so it is more meaningful. So it, it's coming back.
And, and the ones that you've done in the past years, it's been nice to see some of the success stories that you've had. It talks about the projects that have been completed and, and accomplishment of employees and so forth. I always thought it was a good report.
We will definitely be doing that again. It's just been put on hold for a little bit until we got through the strategic plan.
I have a question. Are you done, Councilmember Parra? Thank you. You said you had a sixty-seven percent turnover?
Yes.
Okay, and then you have a couple of technician positions that you've not been able to fill for a couple of years.
Yes.
So how is that work still getting done? And/or is that contributing to turnover based on workload, based on innovation, or whatever technicians do to alleviate some problems?
So, and our, our field staff, where we've seen the bulk of the turnover, we're actually have, we're down an entire crew right now, and we're juggling people from one function to another to, to make it work. We're more dependent on contractors to fulfill some of the responsibilities that employees can't do because they don't have time to do it. We have a backlog of work orders that if we worked on it continuously now, it'd take almost two years to complete. So we're prioritizing, we're, we've cut back the number of crews that we have. On the wastewater side, we, we're very dependent on contractors now to fill in the gaps, which is, right now, we're kind of at a critical situation with the, the major construction project going in because all the training on all the equipment and maintenance of the equipment is going on as it's being installed. So we'd hope to have the maintenance staff fully staffed while that training was going on so they would know how to maintain it. But right now, we just can't fill the positions.
Is that a function of salary? Is that a function of the workload, the experience level that's needed?
It's a function of salary, and quite honestly, working at the wastewater plant is not pleasant work. You know, we, we're looking for industrial mechanics that are willing to take, to take apart a pump that's full of sewage. So it's not pleasant work, but in the past, we have been able to fill those positions, so a lot has to do with salary. The turnover on the air field crews, a lot of those employees are going to contractors or they get their CDL license, so they start driving a truck. And they're, one of the challenges, one of the things that they, they don't like is that they, every fifth week, they have a mandatory standby. They have to be on standby and overtime every fifth week. And then we have a call duty person that's on call twenty-four seven, too. So just rotating through that scenario, the fewer staff we have, the more frequently they have to go through that, that standby and call duty.
Would we consider these positions to be essential?
Absolutely.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that we're keeping the big picture in mind of, of who and how we're paying people. And if we're putting a bunch of salary adjustments and salary studies on hold, this is going to affect us down the road because this function or water quality is not going to change. And so I just, you know, I just want to make sure, and I'm sure you all are, but I'm just basically talking to council on this because our essential personnel, I mean, they're a growing list of people and functions, okay.
Thank you very much.
Can I add on to that?
Yes, Councilmember Parra.
This is absolutely one of the core services of municipal government. So I'm clogging a sewer pump, yeah, or a wastewater treatment plant pump, yeah, that's nasty. Another reason why not to use flushable wipes, or no such thing as a flushable wipe. A couple of years ago, I remember Mr. Vercheck making a comment about this. Have you thought about a rebranding of that plant at all? Is it a water reclamation facility now, or is it still a wastewater treatment plant? Is there any way you could kind of polish the image up a little bit?
We, well, we, we have talked about that, and that, it has fallen on the priority list, but it, but we have thought about that. We are actually, our public relations staff is working with communications and marketing and putting together a video, a recruitment video for our employees, too. Hopefully, that will attract some as well and just, I mean, there, there is a lot of reward in doing the work that we do because it is public service and doing, protecting the environment and protecting public health. So we're trying to brand it to that extent, but I think you're right. I think as far as rebranding the wastewater plant, that would be a good thing as well.
Thanks.
Councilmember Wright?
How do you compare against, you know, other?
Other localities in our pay for, for folks in these, especially the high turnover positions? I mean, obviously adjusted for, for cost of living, but how do we, how do we stack up?
I think it's, it's, it's a challenge across the board. I don't know exactly, I'd have to go back and look at the data from the corn fairy study to see. We had, we do have progression plans on our field staff, so they can move up. But whether or not that baseline where we're trying to attract employees, typically, if we can get an employee and keep them here for five years once they get vested in VRS, then they're more likely to stay. But right now, we're seeing a lot of turnover in the one to three-year range. So I think the workload is, is hard, it's heavy, and just, it's challenging. And people don't like the standby and call duty pay very much, or standby and call duty work. They like the pay that's associated with it.
But you said also that they are going to private companies doing the same work?
They are. They, they're either going to private companies as drivers because they have the CDL license, or they're going to contractors. They're, they're doing, like Columbia Gas has, we have lost a lot to Columbia Gas, and they're, they're contractors over the years.
Okay.
Sorry, you were going to say something? I was just going to, you know, offer that unfortunately, one of the byproducts of the current moment is that we actually may have more applicants, regrettably.
Could be.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, we, we.
We've been, sorry, we've been in a low unemployment state for quite some time, and we've had difficulty not only recruiting positions in Water Resources, but throughout the entire city. And sadly, because of the reason, that's likely to change.
When you're, when it's three percent unemployment, it makes it really hard to recruit. It doesn't matter how much.
Right, this may change the whole dynamics of what we're talking about. But, but we are looking for some skilled employees, like at the wastewater plant, the maintenance positions in industrial.
And I think you can highlight just the, you know, when you have a restaurant or retail that they lay off ninety percent, and, and city government has not just, you know, you typically have very low turnover for, a very low forced turnover. You know, it's only, lots of it is voluntary turnover because you, you know, you have not necessarily tenure. I guess you only have the tenure in the, in the school division, but rarely are we having a high force turnover by layoffs and whatnot. So I think lots of people may say, well, there's some benefits for that. And the benefits aren't just the salary, the benefits are the, the job security. The benefits are the retirement and the pension and the health insurance, those kind of things, so.
But you're saying in the first five years, that doesn't matter to anyone, it seems.
That's, that's where we're seeing the turnovers in the first five years. And again, this, that may, that may change.
Okay.
If I could add one more thing. What Mr. Mitchell is talking about is, it's really industry-wide across the U.S. I wrote a presentation, or did a presentation on this two years ago, where we talked about just, if you look at the bell curve of age of operators, meaning wastewater treatment plant operators or water plant operators, the majority of them are over, over forty years old, fifty, and approaching retirement age. And you see a big bell curve, and they've got twenty years of experience. And operating a water or wastewater plant, yes, there's the science behind it, there's the, the computer-assisted equipment that's telling you what to do, but there's a whole lot of just experience and look and feel and understanding of how it works. And that doesn't happen in five years. That happens in about ten to have a good water operator, wastewater operator. So this is a challenge for the industry-wise, so Mr. Wright's spot on. It's a, it's a, it's a problem. And if we can find younger people that are interested in the science of it and involvement of it, it'd be really helpful.
I'll just add one, one comment to that, and then I'll quit. Right now, as far as our water plant operators and wastewater plant operators, we have ten employees that are over sixty-five.
There you go.
That may, after, after this is all said and done, may not, may not come back. And in order to get to the level of a Class One water plant operator or wastewater plant operator, it takes at least four years to go through that process. So there, you can't replace them overnight.
And, and that doesn't mean after four years of it, it's still, it means you're certified, but you still don't have that baseline knowledge of a ten-year operator.
And it also takes, for a field crew, it takes a long time to learn over a thousand miles of water lines and sewer lines as well.
Right, and we're, sorry, obviously, this is my field, this is, I could talk about this all day. But, so on any given day, an operator could probably run our water, or waste, or run our wastewater plant. Our wastewater plant's more challenging. But it's the days when you have five inches of rain all of a, all of a sudden come through the system. How do you manage that with that dumping raw sewage into the river? And that's where the expertise and the experience really, really pays off. It's what you do in a bad situation, not, not on a daily situation. Anyway, I'll shut up now, sorry.
Well, no, I, I mean, I'm just thinking we're, we're kind of doom and gloom on looking at this situation, but we're still going to need these services after all of that. And so I'm just trying to put us on the other side of pay, what matters, recruitment, and multiple areas in the city. And so that's, that's why I'm asking the questions. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it very much, thank you.
Councilmember Hagelson?
This is a little bit different from the fact that it is an enterprise fund. So it's, it's, as opposed to the general fund that we're looking at, having the, the general fund revenues declining. This, I think we're not seeing a vast discrepancy in the fee for the service, right? I mean, you said the revenues are about the same, so, you know, with that, that requires a, as an enterprise fund, you're, you're looking at the things within that enterprise, the revenue and the, the expenses associated with it. So it's not taking it from the general fund to figure out what's essential and what's not essential. Thank you.
We still need people. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We are down to the last section of the general fund. Several other funds are included in this section, and Donna is going to walk you through them.
The first one is our City Federal State Aid Fund, which is our grants. And if you'll notice on page three hundred and twenty-nine, there's a reduction of one point eight four FTE, and the revenues and expenditures are relatively flat as compared to the adopted 2020. As you turn to page three thirty, you'll see in the expenditures, this is a list of the grants that are included in this fund. The one to note is the, for the Office of the Commonwealth's Attorney. They will no longer have the Improving Criminal Justice Responses Grant, so that's a reduction there. And we do see a little bit of extra money in a few of the other grants. And then as you turn through the next pages, it gives you the specifics for each one of those grants. So if there's no questions on page three on page 344, we have the Community Development Block Grant Fund. I believe SEDAC is meeting tomorrow, and we'll be talking about these funds and the distribution of those funds. So there's a little bit less compared to fiscal year 2020, $714,865. On page 346 is the Children's Services Act Fund, and we have no change compared to current year. On page 347 is the Forfeited Assets Funds. We can't budget these funds, so you'll actually just see what was the revenues and expenditures that were done for this actual 2019. Page 348 and 349 on.
I think that's a good thing not to budget it, because you'd hate to say, you know, not saying that you would, but hey, we've got to, we'll get some money to meet our budget.
Yeah, we are not allowed to project that legally.
Yeah, so which is good. Have you seen a decline since we haven't been, because we used to project it. I don't know how long ago that's been that we haven't.
No, we never project a budget for the Forfeited Assets Fund. You're really legally not allowed to do that. So we just, each year show how much revenue came in and the expenditure for the actual, for prior year.
Has it been a decline or increase, or?
Um, I think.
No idea. No problem, just curious.
It depends on, it depends on the activity of that year. You can't.
Curious more than anything, so leave that alone. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Page 348 is our Home Investment Trust Fund of $424,288. There's a slight decrease in that. And again, this will be talked about with SEDAC funds. The Lynchburg Expressway Appearance Fund is, remains at $75,000. On page 351, I believe Tamra went through the Regional Juvenile Detention Center Fund when she presented. Page 355 is the Risk Management Fund, and I believe Walter talked about this fund, or James Hall, I think. So anyway, of course, this is our insurance premiums and how the other funds contribute to this for our insurance needs. Page 358 is the Special Welfare Fund, and again, it's flat funding this year. And on page 359 is the Technology Fund. And that list of projects, there's about a $230,000 decrease from current year, and that is all the other funds.
All right, thank you, Mr. Verchek.
So we have about 25 more minutes. We can begin to walk you through the capital improvement program, or that can wait until next week, when the school superintendent will be here. Counsel's pleasure. I also have a COVID update to give you that'll take just a few minutes.
Thoughts, council members?
Good place to stop, if it's a good place to stop.
Good for you to answer. We'll have questions.
Yeah, I'd rather run to that. Thank you.
All righty, COVID questions. Where's my backup team? So first and foremost, I too want to thank our employees for just stepping up and working very differently and more innovatively in what are, as we all know, unprecedented and extraordinary times. I'm just going to go through a quick summary of our emergency support functions and the work that has occurred since last week. But first, I want to begin with what is not so great news, and that is that the number of cases in Lynchburg increased from nine to 20 from yesterday to today. So we now have 20 cases as recorded by the Virginia Department of Health. The first emergency support function is transportation. And one of the things that I don't think Brian mentioned in his presentation, because he wasn't supposed to, is that we, GLTC has responded very quickly to some concerns that more than nine people were riding on the buses. And they overnight reconfigured and got word out about the importance of social distancing. And I think that is running much smoother than it has been. The Strategic Management Team, Emergency Support Function 5, continues to meet every weekday morning virtually, and we go over any emerging issues from the day before, or things that we are seeing that are coming down the pike. This group is working with organizations from the Continuum of Care that works on homelessness to help develop a plan for homeless individuals that may be exposed to COVID-19. The Resource Support Function is collecting information from all city departments that might have a need for additional personal protective equipment. You being equipped with masks today was part of that. And the departments are submitting the burn rates for the use of these items to the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. The folks in this group also worked with the Department of Human Resources to develop a public safety isolation plan for our essential employees who needed to quarantine away from home. Unfortunately, we needed to use that function with our firefighters this past week. We continue to collaborate with the Blue Ridge Emergency Medical, Blue Ridge Emergency Medical System Council, Centura, and the Health Department, and the department's medical director to further discussion regarding the overall community's public health initiatives in this regard. Parks and Recreation employees continue to staff six of the city's neighborhood centers as distribution points for the city schools feeding program, and are also providing delivery vehicles and drivers for some of the more highly, more higher-density neighborhoods throughout the city. I mentioned the work that the Long Term Recovery and Mitigation Group is doing in determining the regional economic drivers, the preliminary impacts of the pandemic to businesses, institutions, and utilities. The External Affairs Group, headed by Communications and Public Engagement Director Joanne Martin, has been very busy working on getting updates out to the community, updating the city's webpage on a more-than-daily basis, including LTV doing a weekly message from the mayor that gets posted to the website and to social media. That group is also working with other departments to ensure that we are all on the same page citywide with a unified message. And then finally, the Employee Support Group is, has updated the public health emergency leave policy to make sure that it is in alignment with the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. And I think the fire chief is here and others who can help answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Questions, council members? Thank you for that update. Councilmember Wright?
Madam Mayor, so I know we are moving some meetings, some boards and permissions meetings, to video conference. I know that I've seen that other localities around the state are doing the same for their city council meetings. Is that something that city staff is recommending that we do?
It's your pleasure. We'll do whatever you want us to do.
And legally, that's permissible?
Yes.
Okay, sure of that.
To move to web meetings?
To move city council meetings to virtual meetings.
I think, I thought we had, on the vote the other week, that we had, Walter had mentioned that there still has to be a quorum where some people who are gone could be there. I thought that's what, you had to have a quorum present. And then he said that's even best case.
Right. There's still, there is still that legal piece that, yeah.
Well, that's, and that's what I'm asking that we figure out, is?
So if we had a quorum before, and then three people didn't want to be here, apparently, I think that's, or couldn't be here for whatever reason.
I just think we need to sort of iron out exactly when we would do that, and then make a decision about whether we should do so.
I'm not sure what the question is for me to answer.
I think the question is, it's probably for the city attorney, which is to outline for us what our legal obligations are in terms of holding a public meeting, and then decide as a council, as a body, whether we want to continue holding meetings in public. I think that is the.
So it's a question for the city attorney?
It is a question for the city attorney.
Councilmember Perry, sorry.
Are you finished?
No, sorry, no, I was not, I was not done. Thank you, though. Ms. Witt, I understand that the state is going to receive several billion dollars as part of the stimulus package. Do we have any sense yet of what Lynchburg might receive?
No, we don't.
Do we know when we might know that?
There is a conference call tomorrow morning, actually, with a group of finance folks around the state that's being facilitated by Virginia Tech. So we should get some information regarding state support. We don't know, we don't know what that is going to look like, but we will be on the call.
Yeah, well, and we also don't know if we get a portion of that, or if our usual revenues will be cut for '21, so.
It might just balance out what we're going to lose. Do we know if the EDA has considered establishing, like, EDA's in other localities in Virginia, establishing a loan fund for small businesses here? Is that a conversation that's, I know Richmond just established one. Is this something we're thinking about doing?
We have not, not specifically for this. We could discuss it with them, but it hasn't been.
Do you know how much, I don't know what their resources are and what they're sitting on.
I don't have a lot of time to do that.
I do.
Should be worth knowing, you know, where we can stretch. And so you all may have seen the article in the paper, I'm sorry, I know I'm capitalizing the conversation, but I appreciate your patience. The article in the paper this morning about the May election, and specifically the lack of PPE and cleaning supplies for the registrar's office, and I mean, we know that, well, we don't know yet whether the election will continue to be held, either in person or on that date. But what assistance is being offered to the registrar's office?
The registrar's not asked us for, well, actually, they have asked for some assistance from Public Works. Is that something, do you know, you can address?
Yes.
Good evening, how are you? They have asked us for assistance getting cleaning supplies, but we're having trouble getting them ourselves. So we're going to put it in order tomorrow to try to assist them with that. They've also asked us to craft and make some barricades, some glass barricades, so I guess the people running the elections can stay behind a barricade, but still be able to see the people that they're working with. So we're going to try to work on that for them. That's what they've requested so far.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
They've also, this morning, requested some personal protective equipment, such as masks, gloves, and other such devices, in addition to shelters, mobile shelters like tents, and some other equipment that we are working with the Department of Emergency Services and the registrar's office to make sure that they get what they need.
Thanks, Dave. And then, sorry, two more quick items. Have we thought about, well, I guess, to what extent are nonessential employees being diverted to other tasks? And I know in some communities, they've, for example, been using nonessential employees to do remote checkups on, like, senior citizens or folks with disabilities who are in public housing. Is that something that we're thinking about doing? And to what extent are we sort of repurposing our workforce?
Reed and I have met on Friday and Monday with each department director to talk with them about the FY 2020 budget and the FY 2021 budget. And there will be some additional news before the end of the week regarding staffing. There is a senior citizen hotline, if you will, that is being staffed out of the Templeton Center. So some folks in Parks and Recreation that wouldn't normally be doing, that would normally be doing something else and don't need to do that are helping to staff that. We have not talked about doing a significant outreach program. We just don't have those resources.
Thank you. And then the sort of last question is, obviously, there are now, unfortunately, a lot of coronavirus scams going on. To what extent is the city warning? I imagine this is part of the city's communication effort, but.
I think whenever we're aware of something, we try and get it on all of the different social media channels and press releases as we possibly can.
So we are taking active, we're trying to make sure that if anything does come up, like, folks are getting fake checks or whatever in the mail, that we're letting them know.
We're doing our best on that.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Councilmember Perry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Verchek, city staff has really done a tremendous amount of work on all this. Every department's been struggling, tried to figure out how to manage this crisis, from the shutting down of City Hall to, you know, picking up the trash. I mean, all aspects of city employees have been affected. And I just wanted to thank you and the city staff for all the work that you've done and that you'll continue to do to manage this problem. I know it changes daily, probably not as much as it did in the first two weeks, and it's probably getting a little bit more manageable from a decision-making process. And now it's just operations and processes. Is there anything you need from city council to be effective in pursuing this?
I can't think of anything particular, although I will just say that many of the things that are on your list or ideas that even emerged today are things that we've already taken into account and will be using as we bring back a revised budget to you on its, it's actually on the 28th, not the 21st. On April 21st, you have a free night, if you will. The other thing I would just add is, anytime you see a city employee, particularly our first responders, but any employee, they really have stepped up, and they've learned to work remotely, they've learned to work differently. You know, closing City Hall this week was a pretty big deal. You think it sounds easy, we just have to close the doors, but it's not quite that easy. Not everybody who works here has a key to City Hall. So those are the kinds of things that I'm thinking of. Thank you for asking.
And if you think of something that, I know just put you on the spot right now, but if you think of something, let us know. I'm not sure how we can, what we can do to help, if we can do something to help, or if you need something specifically, let us know. I like the marketing campaign that's been going on, that I think that accomplishes two things. I saw the billboard on the expressway the other day with the multiple pictures of city employees holding up the signs, saying, what does the sign say?
We're work, something like, "We're working so you can stay at home."
Exactly, all right. And the stay-at-home message, I think that accomplishes several things. One, it lets our citizens know that the city is still working, and that our dedicated employees are still doing what they need to do. And two, it makes people recognize, you know, that it is a rewarding job to work with the city. You accomplish something at the end of every day, and you're providing good services. So maybe it's a recruiting benefit for us as well. Last thing, what is our upcoming council schedule look like? We talked about our budget schedule at the last meeting, but what are we anticipating on changes, if any, to the council's schedule? Last time, we accelerated the meeting to happen starting at 6:00, or have you given any thoughts to that?
So on April 14th, you have a couple of land use issues that require a public hearing. So you will have your regular meeting at 7:30. That's the way that was advertised. It's not a long agenda. And we've put, Robin can speak a little more to this in terms of the things that are in place for people to provide public comment.
The same thing that we did for the budget. They can email or call.
Which was very effective.
Yeah, I think that worked out really well. The 21st, again, that is a free night. Then on the 28th, we have the regular work session. I think there are very few things on the regular session. And if I can move, if there's not a public hearing, and I can move it up to just against the 6 o'clock budget work session, then I will do, will make every effort to do that, whether you're meeting here in person, or whether you're meeting remotely, whatever you decide.
Okay, and spring's normally a lighter time as we're going through budget.
I'm sorry?
Spring is normally a lighter time as we're going through budget, too, isn't it?
Nothing's feeling lighter these days, so.
Well, for not, but from, for a city council agenda standpoint, I don't want the work of the city to slow down, or us to be a bottleneck for people that are trying to conduct business. So I think we need to make sure that we're doing that and doing that efficiently, as efficiently as this body can.
Absolutely. The last thing that I would add is that in a time of incredible instability among all of us, but especially among our citizens, I really view the work that we do as local government to be a beacon of stability, and that we are going to continue to do the work that we do as public servants and do it the very best way we can. that we do as public servants and do it the very best way we can. And I am doing my best to preserve that as the leader and communicating that to all of our employees. It's uncertain times for them as well.
And last, last thing. Thank you for the masks. Thank you, I guess, for public safety for the mask. And my wife wouldn't let me out of the house without wearing one I found behind the seat of my truck. So thank you. This will make her very happy. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I actually just want to tack on to Councilmember Perrow's point and offer thanks. And then also sort of, I guess, more broadly, make the point that when we get this community back on our feet financially, when this government is solid again, that we remember just how important and valued and talented our civil servants are. You know, it's easy to sort of forget them when times are good, and then it's easy to praise them when times are rough. And so I hope we remember them and offer them tangible thanks when times are good again. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone? Councilmember Hagelson?
Yes, just as we look at this coming up, and we do have Easter coming up, you know, I've heard from lots of pastors. And so I guess the beauty of this time, where lots of people are staying home, we get to kind of look back. You know, back a few months ago, we had a public hearing on the Second Amendment. Part of this, we can also now be mindful of the First Amendment. And I'm hearing from lots of pastors that are nervous, but they're doing what they can. And especially at this Easter time, when they want to do what churches do, and especially in time of crisis, people like to get together and pray. People like to, you know, especially at Easter time, remember the Lord's risen and have their services. So I hope that we're mindful and public safety is mindful, you know, obviously of the First Amendment where you have peaceable assembly. And, you know, I've seen it in other localities or other states where, you know, pretty heavy-handed government comes out and breaks up people. And obviously, we're not like that in Lynchburg. And I can appreciate that that doesn't happen. Glad to hear the latest reports of things kind of down... On a downward trajectory from the state. So lots of the things are going in a positive direction. Sadly, we had about 114,000 people in Virginia that filed unemployment last week, which is a record. And so, you know, with that, we've got to be mindful of the citizens that are paying the bills. We've got to be mindful of our, you know, our citizens that are our employees that are working to make sure they're safe. So thankful for our firefighters that things came out clean. You know, and those that are going in to harm's way, and they're willing to do it, I'm thankful that things came out nicely. I'm thankful for our police officers as well. You know, those that are going into rough situations at a time when they'd rather probably be home, you know, it's a tough thing. So I'm very thankful for them as well. So thank you all.
Thank you. And just to follow and make sure that we're not sending any mixed messages, the governor's ban of 10 people or more at a gathering is still in effect, correct? Okay. So for those pastors and churches, I just want them to understand that. I understand the First Amendment, and people have the choice in other states and localities to do what they want to do. The safety, as advised by medical experts, is to keep it to a 10 or less gathering. And so I just wanted to echo that, just to... I mean, we're all going to be celebrating, those of us, whether we celebrate our faith or however we do it. But just the responsibility to what the governor's order has said is that it is still under the 10% or less gathering limit. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was said. And I also wanted to echo the... I'm sorry. Were there other council members who had something that wanted to say? I'm just kind of ending it, I guess, for me. But to say to all of the employees, "Thank you," because it is challenging, it is unprecedented, it is a little nerve-wracking. And I also wanted to speak publicly to the family members, those who have emailed, those who have called me. Not everybody considers all the positions essential. They love to see their loved ones be at home with them. And so it is hard to respond back to family members who have the concern of their relatives who are in these positions, still doing the work of the city. And so I just wanted to encourage them that our city, our staff, the crisis team, is doing everything they can with protective equipment, with practices, protocol, and processes to keep all of our personnel, whether it's our public works, our public safety, our bus drivers. I've heard from a lot of people. And so, you know, just to say that we're doing all we can to keep everyone safe. We still have city functions that we have to do. And so I just want everyone to be mindful of the employees, but as well as their family members who have some stress as well of supporting them during this time. So thank you all. And if there's not anything else, we are four minutes early, so y'all remember that next time when I'm talking past 6:00. Thank you.